All right, it is 5:15, July 5th, 2023. I will call the meeting order, January roll call.
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Beelenberg?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson has let us know that he will be unable to attend due to some training on the fire department.
And we've all received the amended agenda. Don't see any changes since that. Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And state any conflicts now or as they come up along the way. Under the consent agenda, this is all under one motion, one roll call. We have the minutes of the June 20th, 2023 council meeting. Claims list 1293, the amount of $489,347.85. There were a few large ones on there. Everybody have a chance to take a look at those? Questions, anything that caught your eye? Otherwise, I would then move on to the HMU Sewer Landfill Reconciliation Report for May of 2023. With that, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Beelenberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the review, the agreement for professional services 2024 sanitary sewer collection system rehabilitation project. Any comments about that one, Gene?
Yes, both these items on the agenda related to a, relate to the sanitary sewer project and trying to go to the report that was included in your packet. So as you may recall, a few meetings back, one of the required elements for consideration with the CDPG grant is a permanent report and study on the collection system. And we contacted with our engineer, Mr. Kim. This product, this report is a product of that work, which is included in your packet. And just wanted to highlight a few sections that for you as well as the public if, that were included in the report. And one of them was in the areas that we're looking to focus on. There were three pages. So as we map a whole system of all of our sanitary sewer mains, based upon the inspections and televising done the last number of years, we have rated them based upon, you know, poor condition, all the way up to good to excellent. So what this project is focusing on, these tables in the report identify are the areas that are poor, which are the areas we're looking to line. So there were three pages of that and then represented by this map. So this is the intended, if you, the highlighted areas are the, are the intended areas that are in poor condition that we intend to line. And once again, the combined, or the funds we're looking to utilize are what we've allocated from our ARPA money. And then additionally, why we're doing these steps is to make an application for CDPG, which takes me to the last item in the report, which I think was on page, discuss the proposed implementation schedule. And again, so this indicates kind of where we're at on this timeline. And the next key milestone would be October of this year is when we're looking to make application with the CDPG grant. Again, this is in combination with SWIFTCO, our council of government. And then with anticipation of receiving that award, then we would look to actually start construction next year with, if they couldn't get it done in a one season, then complete it the next season. So just want to highlight a few of those areas in the report. And in working towards this October first deadline for the CDPG grant, items A and B on the agenda, we'll come full circle on this, both relate to meeting the requirements, one is you need to have a set of plans and specs for the project as well as a DNR construction permit is required for that application. So happy to answer any questions, but wanted to further explain that to, further tie those elements together.
I assume going back and looking at the map here, obviously the blue is the areas they identified as were some of those pictures that were attached?
Yes.
In our thing where the cracks were that needed the most offset to, okay.
Yeah, there were some good examples in there of.
Yeah.
And again, there's one of those things outside, out of mind with a lot of infrastructure that Joe and HMU deals with. Yet you can see the age of the infrastructure and.
Is that just like a filling, they just go in and like make a new mold in the existing one and it dries and then that's?
It's called secure and place, CIPP, it touches on this construction or this process. It's like a really wet sock and.
Yeah, it's like, I mean, if you want to imagine a sock.
Yeah, that's just some.
They, they start it and they actually, you can only get, your socks turned inside out, so then they force it in with like water and then turn it right side out as it goes down the.
They're just aligned to the.
Like a polymer or whatever in it. They got to put some heated water in there and then it cures and just turns into almost like plastic again.
It's hard.
And they have to go away to cut out where the service line starts.
What's the life on one of those?
Oh, I suppose you can get another 50 years out of it or.
Yeah, I don't realize.
And it's probably a lot less labor doing it that way than digging all this up and.
You'd have to dig up the street.
Yeah, not to mention, yeah, having the closed streets and you're dealing with traffic.
And you're just doing.
That's cool.
And some of them are quite, some are quite deep. So it'd be very labor intensive.
And this has been around for a while, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Very successful.
I mean, it's not new technology or experimental technology or anything.
CIPP lining is, these need practice and practice and accepted.
We've done this before, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we've done, just inside, I think, two or three projects, might be five, six blocks. This is much more substantial. Again, we're able to leverage ARPA funds and the idea of these on CDPG money.
I do.
Does it take away, like, make it a shorter space? Is it pretty minute?
Reference that in the report, but yeah, very minute. So in terms of capacity and flow, it's a very minor impact.
Not going to notice it.
Good question.
Okay, any other questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second that?
Motion by Beelenberg, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Next up would be to review the DNR permit for the sanitary sewer collection system rehabilitation project, which we just talked about.
Basically therapy and.
Questions about that? If someone make a motion for that?
Motion?
Second?
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Next, we have the review, the agreement for the private improvement of granular road. This is a project with county, with the private citizen.
You'd be happy to address that if you'd like, Mayor.
Yep.
So on June 8th, the Streets Alleyies Committee met, a couple of items on there, and this was one of the items. Gary Hop, citizen as well as a business owner with performance grading, has expressed interest to both the county and the city for just over a two mile stretch that's currently granular or rock surface and would like to do private improvement. So has some good dialogue. Gary was at the Streets Committee meeting. From that, it was directed to, as well as the county engineer was at the meeting as well. Also note, this is on the county board of supervisory meeting tomorrow morning on their agenda and almost identical carbon copy agreement, so quite similar. And this would be to change the surface from rock to seal coat. Best way to compare that would be Exchange Street. And the agreement has been run by our city attorney. It meets the, I guess it was, from the Streets Committee meeting was directed to draft up an agreement, went back and forth with county as well as city attorney, and that's what is in front of you, a one-page agreement. Staff does recommend, talking to our three departments as well, and we discussed some of these things at the meeting, that it actually would reduce maintenance and our contribution would be what our labor and material cost would be each year, which is about $50,000. And the counties is using the same cost methodology. And this was the, if you, you were all included on the street, this was what the map looked like, which was reviewed at the Streets meeting. The red section is the first mile that goes out to our wastewater plant. And then the next mile plus goes out to performance grading business and residents. And the agreement specifies, again, maintenance responsibility, the minimum spec in terms of grade prep of the base, the one mile base, excuse me, the one mile section of the cities, again, we're rehashing this a little bit, when we had, 2016, 2017, went in and actually restabilized the base. So we've, the one mile section for the city has got a very good base at this time, it's going to need to be some improvement to get the right crown so water flows. And the rest of the agreement specifies, again, if it doesn't perform or hold up, with the maintenance responsibility, which is private personals are related to that with an expectation to tend to those. And if not, it's at the sole discretion of the city and or county in their section. If it's not being maintained or not performing, that it gets converted back at the private party's expense. Any comments, questions, and I guess those were at the Streets Committee meeting that want to further highlight or. And again, the counties are doing this at their meeting tomorrow.
I see a lot of negatives too.
Because.
It's kind of a win-win.
Yeah. Wear and tear on our cars.
Tim was pretty excited, I guess, you know, the wastewater, let's grab one truck too, so. Yeah, there is, I mean, definitely wear and tear on our sanitary sewer plant vehicles and between tires and shocks and.
The washboards, it's always going on out there.
Washboards there, yeah. And this is one of the few areas where the county has a lot of miles of rock road.
No, I think it's a great idea. I mean.
Okay, is there a motion for this agreement?
I will make that motion.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have review, the HHPC downtown upper story facade grant completion award, requests for 401 Market Street. This is the Schickinger building down there. Nice improvements to the windows?
Oh, it looks good.
Markets? Yeah, this was the.
Mr. Bruce's.
No time wasted in terms of, it's the first one of the year and they got it and got it done right away, obviously they need reimbursement. This was in your packet. And again, the upper store windows on both the west side and the south, north side have all been replaced with the, it's got the transom up top and the double hungs. Looks nice. And Roger went up and inspected it, we got the photos. Ready for the final step, and with your authorization, we can get their funds released to them.
Okay, any other questions? I'll look for a motion for the award of $8,269.91.
Motion?
Motion by Kroger, second by Beelenberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving right along, city administrators report.
Sorry. I have it shut off.
Gene, if you want to take your.
Yeah, I see that, yeah. Hang on the spot there, a time for the report.
So, no, she put you on a timer. That's what it was. Timer. It's been a few policies when you're on.
Take it away, Gene.
So Wednesday, July 5th, so yesterday was officially Independence Day. And then Mother Nature, as we all know and you all know, had other things in store last evening, hats off to the Legion and making an early call, you know, to, no one can 100% predict what it looked like forecast were, so allowing people to make plans or adjust plans as needed. Fireworks will be tonight at dusk. I think Mother Nature is going to cooperate much better from the looks of it. We did receive one email complaint to the city general mailbox regarding fireworks. Again, if you live in town, didn't have to go very far to see that there were fireworks flowing off throughout the weekend. Spoke with the sheriff last week, talked about it going into it, and was taking, plan was taking very similar approach in terms of patrol and follow-up when the calls come in. Didn't have an exact count and checking with the county center today, but just on the, on the surface, didn't seem like was anything out of norm from previous years. It is frustrating and challenging, I mean, as elected officials, you've heard some of it this year, and we've heard it in the past years as well. I don't think there's a great solution. There was an article, article to register, I think Monday, or was it Tuesday morning from a town south of Des Moines, that, you know, they actually banned, they don't allow discharge any fireworks. And it was a complaint and concern that what can we do and the other side of that coin as well. It's difficult to police and enforce and how much time and energy you want to spend.
Exactly.
So if you receive complaints, certainly you can, I guess, direct them to the office. And if, you know, when this was first introduced back in 2018, we went with a full week of, as far as long discharge legally for a full week, and due to citizen concern and feedback, it was ratcheted back to just the one day, which technically, that was yesterday. And even after some of the rains and rainy rains last night, there were some fireworks still going off. So the real ambitious folks were celebrating. So, you know, just ask for everyone's, you know, patience and understanding, but also be committed to staying in that July 4th date tonight with the city fireworks. Hope everyone enjoys the event and appreciate the sheriff's office, I know they were policing, they were making rounds. I tried to call the sheriff today, I never spoke with him, but I know hearing from others that they were out and about and would drive, drive by if that complaint, so. But any comments, thoughts? I mean, I just wanted to report on it, we had one official complaint through email, and other than that, nothing else has come through the office here.
I would just hope that the citizens would respect the ordinance that's on the books and a lot of citizens are not doing that, and that's probably most disappointing for me. Personally, my dog barks every time one goes off, so she's not afraid of them, but she'll bark every time one goes off. So it's a challenge. We're dealing with it, but I don't know. Seemed to got a little out of hand from my perspective in my neighborhood. It was a little out.
Any other, you know, discussion that you wanted to, at least update what I was aware of? This was the photo taken this morning at 5th and Baldwin. So that is the milling machine from Omni, who's our contractor, beginning the removal or the grinding work called the milling. They started right on time this morning and as of midday and even mid-afternoon, reports are that going very, very well. This is a relatively new machine, has less than 400 hours on it, so it's been pretty efficient. I believe they got quite a bit of Baldwin done today from 5th through 12th. And we did put that on social media, I was on the radio, appreciate everyone helping push that information out. There are some additional temporary signs posted. The plan, the planned path is to go finish, do Baldwin, move over to Willow, come back down on Durant, and then head over to Ninth, or the primary routes. And the paving machine to come in and lay the new asphalt is scheduled to begin next Tuesday. So again, appreciate the public's patience and once the milling is done, again, you can still set the groove surface and you can still drive on the streets after the milling's done. And while paving is done, it's usually blocked off for half a day as things cool and settle, so.
Where do they take that too? Like, obviously go to the truck, where's that going?
A lot of it goes for a milling's pile.
Okay.
That, or either to be sold and/or used on street projects when requested in alleys, other base material, other projects, maybe under storm sewer or things like that.
Thank you.
We did receive two bids, I gave you a report at least in writing, that we had, at the next council meeting, anticipate with our engineer and us to recommend a DNR project on welcome signs. But again, we did receive two bids, one of them came in late and wanted to celebrate that we have an official bid that we can act on and also it doesn't have to fall within all of the guidelines and restrictions of the federal requirement DOT, so we do have a little more flexibility there. So happy and pleased to discuss that on the 18th council meeting. And then last two items I have, next week, we'll be pushing this out on social media. This week, the dog park will be closed due to removing some trees that are dangerous or just getting them down and don't want pets in the dog park. So we'll have signs posted and put on social media as we remove a couple of diseased and/or ash trees in the dog park area. And then lastly, the Iowa State Extension, who's been our partner at the community garden, is planning a community garden night. And that is on the 18th as well, I'm fairly sure, I can write that down. But they'll be pushing out communication, it'll be down on site in the community garden, not only for the gardeners, but even for the public who wants to learn more about gardening or what more they want to see out of the community garden as part of Extension's outreach. So they'll have a small tent and some chairs down there at the community garden site. And I didn't hear Gene's timer go off. Couple, couple, that was all the highlights that I did have.
Some must still go off.
Comments or questions for me?
I did have one comment too, Gene, maybe it is to the public, the fair next week.
Fantastic. Fair week is next week, and as it relates to our street project, the fair parade is a week from Thursday. And with, with intent and planning, the paving machine is starting at the same location at 5th and Baldwin. Again, assuming you know weather delays and there are other hiccups with equipment, et cetera, that a couple blocks of Baldwin will be clearly done before Thursday evening. And Thursday evening is a combination of Roar to Harlem as well as the fair parade, and that's fallen the same night the last couple of years. Is it the same time this year?
No, it'd be the next week, bike night.
I'm sorry, bike night is the.
It's the third.
It was not this year, my apologies.
There was a few riders that might, might.
There might be some rebel riders, yes.
And I see where your daughter's on the Queen candidate, so I'm sure that's high on your mayor's screen. Yes, a lot of activity next week, great county fair, but the street activity and intent is to finish up on Baldwin and create more issues.
Thank God for the weather, let's hope the weather holds out, so.
Looking pretty promising.
Sounds like temperatures would be decent too. You depend, it's a steam.
Anything else from Gene? Questions? Okay, thanks, Gene. Under my report, I'd say this has kind of come full circle. I have to, I need to make a recommendation for a young man who wants to volunteer, and he is near and dear to my heart. My son Nick would like to be a part of the parking rec board expiring in July of 2027. I asked and he said, yeah, he'd think about doing it. I think he's a little nervous because he doesn't know what it's all about, but I said, I think it's a pretty good group. So with, next week, I think it'd be his first meeting, but I guess if he gets approved, I said, I don't know, Nick, this is pretty tough. I don't know if we should come, I said, no, you just stay, you stay home.
Want to come get interviewed?
Just put it out there and we'll see where it goes, I'll let you know. So I would make a recommendation, appoint Nicholas Christiansen to the parking rec board.
I will second the motion as well.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
He'll always be a kid, he's a 41-year-old man. I appreciate him stepping up, doing this. That's all I got under my report. And I don't think Todd is going to make it, so move on to Joe, who's at HMU.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a few items. Water project on the car trenching, we're looking at probably starting in about two weeks, about two, three weeks here. And it looks like he's going to start probably on some of the pipe work down in our south well field is where we're going to concentrate studying, so at least we're making progress there. There again, I think things would have to probably go really well in order for us to probably get any wells online this season. You know, we're probably looking more for next spring, if we have the wells completed, piping done, all like electrical controls done for the wells, but we'll just have to see how things go. Another item, we kind of have a bi-weekly or monthly cleanup day where we're trying to keep ahead of trees and, and weeds and everything around our facilities. Last week, Tuesday, we concentrated on the east sub, so if you get a chance going past there, that Victoria Station, there's kind of a lot of weeds and trees on that west bank. We added in there last week and cleared that all out, actually hauled out about three dump trailers of brush on that. So it's pretty bare now, but we're going to have to try to make some kind of plan. There's a little bit of brom grass that was buried in spots, that's, you know, of course we left. Try to get it seeded, hopefully this fall, and try to get something, you know, brom grass or some small vegetation that, that we can get to take there on that bank, things look a lot better than it was. So if we can stay, stay on top of it. Electrical outage, I guess I just maybe wanted to give some, give an update on that again. I know we talked about it before the meeting, but just for the public that's watching, like we talked, they narrowed it down to a pine tree or evergreen tree along Exchange Street that got into our 69,000 volt loop that goes around from substation to our four substations on the outer limits of town. Like I said, that's where that fault was. Like I said, we're working at getting that tree trimmed back, so we don't have any other issues with that. But there again, I think we were out. Main part of the outage was back on, probably in about 45 minutes. And like I said, they had a few other areas where they had to go around and just check to make sure there was any other small areas. So that was, like I said, it's, I appreciate the guys getting right on that, getting power back up right away.
Kudos to you and your staff on that, that's an excellent response time, was I would think, at 2:00 in the morning to have power back on within 45 minutes.
On a holiday.
On a holiday.
On a holiday, yeah.
So thank you to your linemen.
Everyone, shooting fireworks off.
We'll give them ass. Yeah, they're rough in house. Lastly, this is kind of way ahead, but I just thought I'd kind of put a bug in everybody's ear. Looks like December 12th, we're going to stay with kind of a winter Santa theme for our customer appreciation. But instead of doing lunchtime, we are going to go back to evening, so that 4 to 6, 5 to 7. Right now, we're kind of looking at possibly going with pasta. You know, it seems like a lot of, there's a lot of chipping suppers, you know, kind of in the fall, you know, winter time, so we just thought we'd do something different. But that's kind of timeframe, we're looking at December 12th, kind of for evening, you know, supper. And like I said, there'll be more information coming, I guess, as we get that kind of set out that we mentioned again. out that we've mentioned again, moving forward on the line. All right, any questions for me?
Question for you real quick here, Joe. You know, maybe more so for the public too, but you know, kind of halfway through the summer months here, going into July, how are we sitting like on water supply? I mean, you know, with people watering gardens and stuff going on and sprinkler systems and stuff, I mean, are we, we're sitting good, okay?
We're, we're still sitting okay. I mean, I know the plant, I think here probably a couple of weeks ago, we went from maybe the plant running about 22, 21, 22 hours a day to get caught up. Now we're almost, it's getting close to running 24 hours a day, but we are keeping up.
Okay.
Now that we're in our new fiscal year, we did approve to go in and treat another sixth additional existing wells. There again, hopefully, I'd have to ask for sure when that, when they're scheduled to come in, but hopefully in July, August, we can get those additional six treated, so hopefully we can pick up another, you know, a couple hundred gallons in it, which would help us tremendously to stay out of water watch or water contamination. So things are tracking pretty good. I mean.
Could be worse.
Thing like that, we're not getting big rains, but at least that rain, like you said, helps people from watering lawn and watering the gardens. I mean, at least it gets by, because that's been where everything really jumps up when everybody starts watering the lawns and the gardens. So yeah, otherwise, like I said, we're, it's, it's closed, but I mean, we're still, we're still okay.
Could be worse.
Yes.
Good deal.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council members?
Christmas six months, halfway there.
Oh, boy.
It's already got us focused. You know, skip right over later. We're going to have new lights to put up this year, aren't we?
We're going to have Santa here again.
Yeah.
All right, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.